So I thought I would share with you, we had a rally this morning, or there was, excuse me, a rally this morning of our nonprofit community. I don't know how many of you had a chance to be there, all protesting the cut in the safety net that had been proposed by the county executive, a 1% cut in contracts to many of our nonprofit providers. And while there are no final votes, I think I can say with a high degree of confidence that we will restore that cut for sure, and that what we will be looking to do is to do as we have in the past, actually add to our nonprofit community, at least try and make them whole with respect to inflation. So the HHS committee will be taking this matter up on Thursday. We typically put 1% increments, increases on the reconciliation list, a 1% increase, a 2% increase, a 3% increase. I would imagine that's what we will do again this year. And then the chore will be finding those dollars at the end of the day with respect to the budget. But I just thought, this weekend, here was my schedule for this weekend. On Saturday, it was to open with the CNO Canal Trust, a wonderful nonprofit working to make sure that our CNO Canal is everything it should be. Then it was going to the Sandy Spring Museum, which opened up an art barn where we bring art and history together in a lovely part of our county. Then it was the Shepherd's Table, celebrating their incredible accomplishments of taking care of the homeless and feeding people. Yesterday was a wider circles race against poverty, culminating in a large gathering at BCC High School for the Communities Against Hate, and, excuse me, Communities United Against Hate, which itself was a gathering that one did not want to have to go to, but was compelled to go to, given what is taking place nationally and in our county. We have, as all of you know, seen an incredible rise in hate crimes. We have seen it here on our county buildings. And so for the community itself to gather in this way and affirm our values as a county was really a very, very powerful testament to the silver lining in all that's going on, which is good people are coming together to fight back. I tried to give voice to the need for our better angels, for a brigade of better angels. And that's really what that audience was, a brigade of better angels fighting back against the ugliness that is taking place. So I just thought we'd start with the good part of Montgomery County, of which there are so many good parts, but that the heart of Montgomery County is beating strong still. And that probably is one of the finest qualities of Montgomery County. I'll open it up to you guys.
What are your thoughts on the Metro General Manager's plan for its budgets for the next 10 years at expecting $500 million in dedicated funding sources from the jurisdictions?
As you know, this is something that I've been working on for a better part of almost two years now. And I'm very pleased with the General Manager's report. On Wednesday, the Council of Governments will be taking up a report that we commissioned among the region as a whole, looking at a "technical report" that will identify the region's thoughts on how much is needed, as well as potential funding sources. There was a, there's simply no question that our region must come together, and in the next session in 2018, starting in Virginia, we must pass dedicated funding. We must find a path to get to yes on that fundamental question. There may be other issues that we have to address in that context, and that's something we need to work out. I know that the COG will be playing a leading role with respect to that, that this kicks off, if you will, a three to four month coming together, so that hopefully by June, we will in fact embrace a specific approach, because at least I feel like we must be real clear going into the fall, what our strategy is. Because the session starts in January, and we need to be ready to go. We can't be trying to find the answer at that point in time. So I think we are really sort of in the final stages of this, of coming together. And my hope and belief is that we as a region can come together and will come together.
Would COG be able to help give guidance as to where the money would come from? One of the unions' criticisms of Paul Weidfeld's plan was that it wasn't specific on the daily keep.
Right. And that's not his, that's not his role. That is the role of those of us that hold elected office, is to identify that. The technical report will identify options that have been explored with respect to meeting that.
Do you think a regional sales tax would be the best way to do it?
I'm going to withhold, I'm going to withhold judgment, but that has always been at the top of the list with respect to potential funding sources.
And in regards to the nonprofit cut, it's a 1% cut right to grants that go to certain nonprofits. Is this a specific type of nonprofits these grants are going to?
This was HHS across the board.
Is there a dollar amount attached to that 1%?
Yes, I believe it's in the $600,000 neighborhood.
So in order for the council to restore that, and a 1% to 3% increase, it could be anywhere from 600 to, what, 2.4 million? Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate. Not a small chunk of change.
Any thoughts on the compensation benefits tomorrow? Do you expect any dissension on that?
I do not.
Can you explain why, what's different this year? It was so controversial last year when the council didn't want to fund with the county executive negotiating with the unions. What's different about this year?
I think we're in a slightly better position. I think we, last year, a lot of our decision-making process was driven by our school dynamics and with the compensation package that had been proposed for schools. And we decided very early on, we could not do that and address what we thought our community most needed to see addressed in our school budget, which was reduction in class size and increasing dollars for the achievement gap. That required a reallocation among, between the unions and teachers and the rest. And that then made it imperative that we treat the rest of our community on equal footing. So I think that that dynamic does not exist this year.
Do you think that the county executive and his staff was on the same page with the county council this year when he was negotiating contracts with the unions?
I think it's fair to say that people might have negotiated this differently. That said, we now have the result of those negotiations, and I don't think there is the will on the council to turn those contracts back two years in a row.
What do you mean different?
I'll leave it at that, that this was the county executive's negotiations. It was not mine, and it was not my colleagues'. Would we have done something differently? I think the odds are, other people might have done things differently. This is his work product, and it always puts us in a difficult bind, because then you are forced to reject that which was collectively bargained.
So you're saying that you don't necessarily, you know, think this is a good contract that the county executive negotiated with the unions, but there's just no political will to not fund it for a second straight year? Or are you saying something different?
I'm saying something different. I'll, I'll hold at what I have said.
Where is your fossil fuels divestiture bill right now?
Fair question. We did receive a very positive letter, personal letter, from the chairman of the Board of Investment Trustees, Gino Renn, that I'll share with you, in which he affirmed his own commitment to working on this issue and urged us to go to a resolution similar to what was passed in the District of Columbia. So I've been conferring with my colleagues, and we will be moving to a resolution as opposed to legislation. Legislation has really gotten the backs up of the Board of Investment Trustees. The county executive has weighed in against legislation. It's my understanding that he will be supportive of a resolution, and that a resolution will create a context in which we can make some positive movement on this issue. So I think that there will be much broader support on part of my colleagues with respect to this approach. It's clearly an approach that the chair of the Board of Investment Trustees has signaled his support for, the county executive's support for, and the larger community believes that this is in fact a step forward. The MOCO 350 organization and Mike Tidwell of the Chesapeake Action Climate, Climate Action Community is on board as well. So we will move forward, really as every other jurisdiction beyond California, the state of California, has done in this realm, which is in a resolution as opposed to legislation.
Am I right in remembering that you have done your own personal divestiture, or asked?
I have asked my investment advisor to make sure that my mutual funds, I don't have any individual stocks, that my mutual funds reflect my commitment to sustainability. And he has indicated that I could do so, and would do so, and that he has done so, and that we could do so without loss of return.
Have you recommended to your council colleagues that they do the same thing?
I don't, I don't tell my colleagues how to handle their personal lives.
Well, by resolution, you're sort of staking out a particular position of that investment philosophy, and why shouldn't?
You are free to ask that of my colleagues. I am not going to tell my colleagues how to do their personal business. I've shared with you how I'm doing my business.
Would the resolution be binding? Would it require divestiture?
No, no. But as you, as you probably know and following in this issue, the Board of Investments Trustees' obligation, fiduciary duty obligation, trumps everything else. That's in state law, that's in federal law. And so we could not order them to do this, no matter what. What we can do is encourage them to do this, and hold them accountable for doing this by having oversight hearings, in which we ask them to come forward, and every year ask them, what have you done to advance this objective? We had last week, a, last weekend on Saturday, the March on, in Washington for Science. I did not go. I will be going this Saturday to the Climate Action March. And so it is my hope and expectation that we will be introducing this resolution following that march on Tuesday next week. So clearly what is going on at the federal level makes it incumbent upon those of us at the local level and the state level to do everything we can on climate action. This is a piece of that, and this was the best path forward to advance that.
If I could talk about another aspect of the federal budget, is there anything going on that you know of with regard to funding for like research on disease, mainly NIH? What kind of things are going on there?
So as you probably appreciate, the federal, the president's budget would have, would result in a dramatic decrease in funding for NIH. I am one of those that believes that Congress will not accept those kinds of budget cuts. So I, we are blessed in this county to have federal representatives, Chris Van Hollen and Ben Cardin and Jamie and John Delaney and, you know, the likes, okay? We have great congressional representation that are doing everything they can. But I do think that the president's budget went so over the line that Republicans and Democrats are going to try and find a way to move forward in a less draconian manner.
If I could kind of make a harsh transition back to Metro, what are your gauges of the amount of support for dedicated funding sources in both federal and state budgets? As you said, there's support, but do you think people will actually vote for it?
I, I do think that there's going to be the conversation in Maryland as to the role that Montgomery County and Prince George's County will play with respect to meeting that piece. But I do think there's broad consensus here in Montgomery County and in Prince George's County that we need to have Metro supported. Secondly, that I think the battleground is and will remain Virginia, and that that's going to be where we need to focus our energy and make sure that the state of Virginia appreciates how important it is to allow Northern Virginia to fund Metro in the manner in which it must be funded. I have no doubt that the District of Columbia will support it. So from the very beginning, this has really been all about Virginia, which is why I thought the governor's appointment of former Secretary LaHood, a Republican, was actually a good move. And I remain hopeful that he too will come on board and show how important it is to fund Metro for the state of Virginia.
Okay, if I could ask one more question about this. Another one of the proposals that the general manager had this case, it's for the operating budget, was to suggest that Congress consider legislation that would base the results of binding arbitration proceedings on what the legis, excuse me, the jurisdictions can afford to pay. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that's a reasonable proposal.
What did you think of the governor's comments on the Purple Line judge possibly having a conflict of interest in the case?
So as you may know, I was the first district council member to support the Purple Line. I've been involved in this issue for many, many years, and a big supporter of the Purple Line, and was among those greatly disappointed by the federal judge's decision. I thought it was substantively wrong. And I continue to believe that he should rule and get out of the way so that we can fund this incredibly important project. I will also say to you, I'm a lawyer who has actually practiced all the way to the United States Supreme Court, to the Court of Appeals, and federal judges. And when President Trump criticized federal judges, I found it offensive, even when I disagree with him. So I just say, I think that this is sort of dangerous ground to criticize any federal judge and accuse a federal judge of unethical behavior. Again, I disagree with this judge. I think the decision was wrong, but I don't think it serves our larger political body to have federal judges criticized in this manner.
Have you talked to the state's attorney's office or lawyers handling the case about whether they've looked into this possible relationships that he may have or may not have?
I, I have not.
Can I ask about, you spoke at the announcement for the I-270 work, and you said at that time, I hope this is the beginning, not the end. Have you had any follow-up conversations with either the governor or Mr. Slater on your concern that they'll be able to go, see, we took care of it, we did what we did on 270, see you later?
I am afraid that they will approach this as, we've checked off this box, we're done here. And I think the governor actually made some references to that himself, saying he doesn't envision this, doing significantly more. And I think that's disappointing. I continue to believe that you cannot achieve the kinds of reductions in travel time that are needed by a $100 million investment, innovative or not. This does something, and that's, we don't want to say no to it, but we cannot wait years for a more comprehensive approach to this issue, which includes using our existing right of way the most efficiently we can. We've been arguing for reversible lanes for a long, long time, not simply here, but I've been arguing it for, on many of our roads. Make sure that when we have such a peak flow going in one direction, that we use a lane from the other side to address our peak needs, much as many of you experienced going into the District of Columbia on Connecticut Avenue. So we don't do that enough in Montgomery County, and those are typically state roads that we need to ensure that we can do that. But you, you look at other communities and you see them using their existing capacity in a more efficient manner.
And then in conjunction with Metro, it seemed to me that, I think it was last week, when asked about it, Mr. Weidfeld was pressed on, how long will you stay? If you can't get some kind of dedicated funding, are you out of here? And he seemed to say, if I can't get the money, you know, I don't know how much longer I can keep at it. Is that something that you understand to be the case?
I have not had that conversation with him, so like you, trying to read into the comments that I did see. I would say to you that we are so blessed to have him as our general manager. And I think he has done everything you could expect a general manager to do. Shut down the system, fire people, make sure that it is safe, everything you would want out of your general manager. And when your general manager says, this is what we need in order to turn this system around, I think it's incumbent upon us to rally around him. He's really doing, he's doing it right. And we need him, because if we can't deliver for him, if we can't deliver for the region, then shame on us. This is one of those moments where the region actually must come together, and it will have all the typical fault lines, Republicans, Democrats, unions, non-unions, all the issues that one must confront in finding common ground. And we must find common ground on this set of issues.
Do you think that, or let's, let me start over. To what extent do you think Metro is getting better, if you feel that way?
I, I do think it's getting better. And will it continue to have hiccups? Absolutely. I mean, you've got a system that is aging. So did they correct everything? No. But I think that this general manager has pointed this ship in the right direction, and I think we are seeing increased confidence in the system, notwithstanding that you're going to have daily travails. That is true. But we must look at the big picture, which is, this system cannot fail. There is no option B when it comes to Metro.
Are you satisfied with the planning board standing westward in light of tomorrow's protest?
I believe that there has been a historic injustice that everyone in county government is committed to addressing in a responsible manner.
What form did it take?
It was a yes or no question.
I thought I answered you.
So you are, so you're not satisfied with how they handled it?
I don't think I said that. I believe I said that all county government is committed to ensuring that a historic injustice is not perpetrated into the future, perpetuated into the future. Okay? And that we are totally committed. And I see no evidence to suggest that the planning board is not equally committed. The county executive and I are committed. We have offered mediation with respect to this. Mediation by definition is non-binding on all parties. It is simply a, try, a pathway to get to yes, to bring parties together, to try and create trust, to have a dialogue that's facilitated by professionals, to really create a context in which we can hopefully come to some favorable resolution. But the whole notion of mediation as opposed to binding arbitration is that it's non-binding, that it is a context in which people really try to get to yes. So that's been my commitment with respect to this from the very beginning. And I believe it's the county executives, and I believe it's the planning board. I promise you, I cannot imagine anybody on the planning board or professional staff who are not equally committed to trying to resolve this in the most responsible way possible.
What would that be? What would that look like?
Well, we don't know yet what it will be, because we, we haven't done the steps that are necessary. So one of the steps that has to be done is, quote, the delineation work, to try and identify exactly where there are remains, if there are remains. And then, you know, it's a step-by-step process. Are there overarching issues that people have? Absolutely. But this is, if you will, a regulatory process that works in stages. And I see no evidence to suggest to me that there isn't a commitment to do the work that is necessary to be done here. And I am absolut, I remain confident that we are going to do right by this set of issues.
Have you talked to Montgomery County Public Schools about that, or for that matter, anything else recently?
This has nothing to do with Montgomery County Public Schools.
There are schools in the area, and the people who use those schools are kind of affected by the changes.
Okay, okay. No.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm confused.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but can you still answer my question?
I have not had conversations with the school system about this set of issues.
Can I, can I jump in on, Judicial Watch has complained that the Board of Elections somehow has been negligent in cleaning up the voting rolls, and that there are thousands and thousands of, I guess, voter profiles that can't be verified, et cetera. I believe they're going up there today, or a group that's concerned about this. What are your thoughts on this? Does Montgomery County have a problem in how it maintains its voter rolls?
I'm not in a position to judge whether or not Montgomery County has a problem with how it maintains its voter rolls. If there is a problem, I would expect it to be addressed. None of us are advocates for voter fraud, okay? So if there's a problem here, I expect our officials, who are supposed to ensure that this doesn't happen, take their responsibility seriously, and will do what they need to do.
What I was trying to get around to asking was, have you talked to the superintendent about safety in schools recently?
I have not.
What's the council's reconciliation list looking like now? Do you know, do you have a number in mind of how high it could go? Is there a limit to it?
There's no limit to how high the reconciliation list can go.
Yeah.
There is a limit as to how much gets off the reconciliation list. And so, no, we're not at the stage yet where we have our, a handle on either of those two at this moment in time.
Okay.
It does come into focus quickly towards the end.
Do you have a ballpark figure on how much has actually been cut as you've moved through these budgets, so that you know that you can use, tick off items off the reconciliation list?
No. I don't have that at this point in time. We start getting those reports, I think, next week, as to what's been added, the results of the committee processes. I mean, we're not done with our committee work, so, you know.
Any thoughts on what happens if there's a federal government shutdown, and what the, how the county will respond?
Well, as we discussed before, Montgomery County has a large federal government workforce. Reducing employment opportunities in the federal government, slashing budgets, will have a disproportionate impact on Montgomery County's economy over the long term. Other than that, I think all of us are hopeful that we will not have a government shutdown. But if it happens, it happens, and then we will just deal with the consequences. I can't imagine it happening for long. The longer-term concern really is the size of the federal government, and particularly the mission of federal agencies located in Montgomery County.
Can I kind of piggyback on that? One of my colleagues just did a, I think it was a three-part series on how this region still needs to wean itself from being a company town, in a sense.
Yes.
And I know that Montgomery County says, well, we have the tech corridor, I-270, but a lot of that is still tied to the federal government. How well is the county doing at diversifying its, its economy?
So it remains a challenge. It is one of the reasons why we created the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, because we were not satisfied with doing it the same old way. So we took a model that other communities had used that appeared to be more successful at creating a vibrant private economy. We must grow our tax base. There's simply no question about it. It's either grow your tax base or increase the burden on taxpayers. That is not something that we can do. And if we are, want to be in a position to do all the things that this budget and other budgets that this budget and other budgets suggest, we need a vibrant private sector economy. It's one of the reasons why I have done some of the things I've done with respect to innovation and things of that nature, trying to create a different image of Montgomery County, such that we attract entrepreneurs. And to me, that is the future. It is also one of the reasons why I did this little microloan program, create a context where people that aspire to start their own business have an ability to do that and hire people. So you have to do it from the top, you have to do it from the bottom, but we must create greater prosperity in Montgomery County. And we will not be able to do that based on a federal government strategy. It is time to decouple Montgomery County from that kind of strategy. So it's a fair question and one that will be an ongoing challenge for our county.
You said you didn't want to increase the burden on taxpayers. Would your, would you whistle a different tune if you were referring to Metro funding? Because Larry Hogan said that he might want just Montgomery County and Prince George's County to contribute funding to Metro for the dedicated funding source?
Yes. There are some things that we are going to have to pay for.
Okay. The area of, right next to Langley Park to Combe Park, that area, people have been trying to develop it, but it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. Would Montgomery County ever, like, become involved in that? Because right now, it's kind of being, I'm sorry. Further that conversation? Does that make sense?
It doesn't.
Okay.
Roger, what's the analysis of the parking Bethesda? Where are you guys at? I know you had called for that, given that Marriott's taking over that Woodmont Garage. Has DOT gotten into that analysis? Have you heard anything back yet?
DOT had committed to me that they would have the analysis, but not in April. I believe they committed to get that analysis to us in either May or June. So I do look forward to seeing that work. It is important. But I have not seen it yet.
What are your thoughts on marijuana dispensaries in Montgomery County as a source of income?
I don't believe it's a source of income. I believe it is taking care of. It is taking care of people who need, can utilize marijuana to fight diseases and illnesses, and I am supportive of that. All right, guys? Thank you.
Thank you.